G'day, Dean. Ladies and gentlemen, the date is April 20th, 2020. I call to order a public hearing on charter amendment resolution. Where we begin, I will go ahead and take the roll call of the council. Councilmember, Council President Glenn?
Here.
Councilmember Boyer?
Here.
Councilmember Ringsucker?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yep.
Councilmember Zinner?
Here.
Thank you. We will begin a public hearing on charter amendment resolution, a resolution by the mayor and city council of Havittah Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Constitution, Article 11E, the local government article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and the Havittah Grace City Charter, Section 19, amending City Charter, Section 18, by adding subsection D, enumerating emergency executive powers during a declared state of emergency. At this moment, we will await if there's any public comment on this item. Okay, we are just informed that there's no public comment on this charter resolution public hearing. Any comments from the council at this moment?
None.
Okay, without any comment from the council or the public, I close the public hearing on the charter resolution at 7:01 PM. The time is now 7:02 PM, and we will move into our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Roll call has already been taken. Every council member is present and accounted for. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. I ask kindly everyone to please remain standing as we call on the opening prayer by Pastor Beau Van Dyke of Christ the King Church, and this evening it will be shared by Councilmember Ringsucker.
Everybody please bow your heads. This is an assurance of the Lord's presence with us during these challenging times from Psalm 46. God is our refuge and strength, a very present help in trouble. Therefore we will not fear, though the earth gives way, though the mountains be moved into the heart of the sea, though its waters roar and foam, though the mountains tremble at its swelling. Sila. There is rivers; there is a river whose streams make glad the city of God and holy habitation of the Most High. God is in the midst of her; she shall not be moved. God will help her when morning dawns. The nations rage; the kingdoms totter; he utters his voice; their earth melts. The Lord of hosts is with us. The God of Jacob is our fortress. Sila. Come hold the works of the Lord, how he has brought desolations on the earth. He makes wars cease to the ends of the earth. He breaks the bow and shatters the spear. He burns the chariots with fire. Be still and know that I am God; I will be exalted among the nations; I will be exalted in the earth. The Lord of hosts is with us. The God of Jacob is our fortress. May the Lord be with the city of Havittah Grace, and may he bless us and keep us and make his face shine upon us through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Councilmember Ringsucker, thank you very much. And Pastor Beau Van Dyke, if you're listening out there, thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, before we move forward, I have an addition to make to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
I want to add 11B2. It's a budget amendment, 2020-13.
11B or 11?
It'll be 11B-2. We got, we got an 11B, and then we got a C, so in between, right after, after 2012, we'll have 2013.
Okay, got you. Council, you got that? Any objections? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Okay, we're going to move on to item number five, comments from the mayor. I have a few prepared comments I'd like to make for the public observing this meeting at the current time, and to clarify a few, a few things for everybody. I just want to say good evening to everyone out there watching this meeting. Tonight's public hearing and meeting of the mayor and city councils being livestreamed to comply with the Governor Hogan's executive orders as it relates to social distancing, and to provide the public with an opportunity to watch the proceedings live. The city advertises public hearing and meeting in the local newspapers, on our city website, social media, the shadow box out, the shadow box out front of City Hall, as well as the agenda and specific directions to inform the public as how to make comments and how they will be received as required to conform with the Maryland Open Meetings Act. So in addition to the livestreaming, what is different with tonight's meeting as compared to our normal meeting? First, you will notice that only the mayor, the council members, the city attorney, and the camera person are physically in the council chambers. Any member of the public wishing to speak will be permitted to enter the chambers one at a time. Second, we will hold tonight's meeting using a modified agenda. Only time-sensitive business will be brought before the council this evening. We will not offer directors' reports, and we will only receive citizen comments that are on agenda items for this evening. This meeting will be recorded and included in its normal programming time slot on Hartford Cable Network. This is a first for all of us. Please be patient as we navigate through these uncertain times. I would like to thank our Office of Information Technology for coordinating all the technical logistics of this meeting, and to make sure that the public stays informed and can continue to safely view these proceedings, as well as the public hearing. So in other words, for those who are watching this on television, what you see is just us here in this room. We are managing to allow public comment, one person to enter the room at a time, and we will not be having, this evening, we will not be having public comments on regular city business, but remember, you can always call City Hall at 939-1800, or you can submit emails, and we will answer your calls and your emails every single day. So just want to let everybody know. Item number six, approval of the minutes for March 16th meeting. Do I have a motion?
Submit.
Second.
Council President, second by Councilmember?
Boyer.
Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay. Absent for that meeting.
Do you wish to cast a no vote, or do you wish to abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay, got you. All right, so with abstention from Councilmember Zinner, who was absent for the March 16th meeting, the March 16th minutes carry 5-0 in the affirmative. Thank you very much, council. We will move into item number seven, comments from citizens on agenda items. This is the part of the meeting that if you wish to speak on an item that is on this meeting's agenda, we will look out front to City Hall, see if you're here. Nobody's here, at all. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. We were just informed by our sentry out front that the public is not here to speak.
Do we have any write-ins?
We do, and I was going to read that into the record. Thank you very much. We do have a couple people that sent emails that I will read into the record as promised. This email was sent on Sunday, April 19th, pertaining to the farmer's market, which is on this evening's agenda. This was sent by Ms. Barbara and Mr. Gary Pencil at 150 Congress Avenue, Havittah Grace, Maryland. "As vulnerable seniors in the midst of this pandemic, we object to the city of Havittah Grace holding a weekly event attracting many people to the foot of Congress Avenue where we live. Consider alternative locations which would be safer and more accessible. A high school parking lot slash football field or yacht basin parking lot come to mind." Thank you, Barbara and Gary Pencil. This was an email received Saturday, April 18th, 2020, from Mr. Joe Kogendorfer. Tidings wrote. "According to newspapers, persons wishing to make comments on items on the reference agenda are sent comments," I'm sorry. "According to the newspapers, persons wishing to make comments on items on the reference agenda are to send comments to you for inclusion at the meeting so that in-person comments can be avoided. However, taking that instruction, I wish to make the following comments for inclusion on the record. Number one, regarding the proposed charter amendment, on line 52, I suggest the following be inserted between the word mayor and the word that, and that is with the approval of at least five council persons. Item B, on line 60, I suggest that the following be inserted between the word mayor and the first may, and that sentence would read with the approval of at least five council persons." And that is the only legislative comment there is.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a read from the city attorney on Mr. Kogendorfer's comments relative to the charter amendment?
Hold on one second, I got one more left, I think.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Sorry.
Citizen emailed in on Friday, wanted to, oh, this is not an agenda item. Never mind. Okay, it'll be addressed later. All right, all the agenda items that were mailed into the city have been spoken for. Council President, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to have the city attorney read in on Joe Kogendorfer's comments.
The first one, I wasn't sure where he wanted it inserted, but could you read that
This was on the charter amendment, on line 52. Between the word mayor and the word that, Mr. Kogendorfer wanted to insert the phrase "with the approval of at least five council persons." And on line 60, between the word mayor and the, and the word may, Mr. Kogendorfer wished the council to insert "with the approval of at least five council members."
So basically, he wants the, any decision to be made by a supermajority vote of council members. I think that that is up to the council if they want to have that, instead of four council members, which ordinarily would carry the vote. He wanted the mayor with the council members to vote. That's my understanding of what he wanted. If that's the case, then one of the issues that could happen is if we're in a situation like with this pandemic where we have difficulty meeting because of restrictions, whether you can get a council vote could be a question.
Whether we'd have a quorum.
Correct. It would, there might be an issue having a quorum if people are sick and can't get here, so that was the concern. But again, that...
Is there truly a need for a supermajority?
It's a policy decision, really. I mean, the, the, the authority granted, and I'm assuming this is the one with subsection, the new subsection D? Is that correct?
Correct.
If that's the case, it's only going to deal with temporary measures anyway. The measures would be lifted within 30 days of the lifting of the state of, the state of emergency issued by the state or the federal government, and then the election, if an election were to be postponed under the new charter amendment, it would only be up to 60 days after the lifting of the state of the emergency, and that's really, the additional time there is just to give the city the time to get the ballot published and comply with the other notice requirements of city voting for city elections. So really, it's a policy decision whether the council wanted to have the authority given to the mayor and council, or just have the mayor in the emergency situations have that authority. That's the basic difference.
Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. Takes us to item A, resolutions. We have annexation plan for the lands of Plaski Parcel LLC, and I'll refer to Councilmember Ringsucker. Ringsocker, who's the Chair of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens at home, I'd like to introduce a resolution for an annexation plan of the lands of Pulaski Parcel LLC.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ringsocker. I have a motion by Councilmember Ringsocker, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is a motion to introduce a resolution. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce a resolution carries 6-0 and affirmative. I will assign this resolution number, read the header. This is going to be Resolution 2020-06. The header for this resolution reads as such: "The annexation plan for the lands of Pulaski Parcel LLC located at 1531 Pulaski Highway, near the northwest intersection of Pulaski Highway and the Old Post Road, State Route 7, consisting of three properties in the sixth election district, together with a drainage and utility easement, and part of the adjoining CSX Railroad right-of-way, consisting of a total of 3.613 acres, more or less. A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Constitution, Article 11E, and the provisions of the Annotated Code of Maryland Local Government Article, Section 4-405, which require the legislative body of a municipality seeking to annex property after October 1, 2006, to adopt an annexation plan for the subject property, and that the annexation plan not be part of the annexation resolution." Council, do I have a motion to adopt a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Council have a motion by Councilmember Ringsocker, seconded by Councilmember Martin on Resolution 2020-06. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, Council, this piece of property includes four parcels for a total of 3.613 acres. It's right on Route 40, across from where you come out on the end of Revolution, and it's currently zoned commercial-industrial. It's consistent with our comprehensive plan. There are no voters in that area, and the city capacity for water and sewer will not be impacted by annexing that property.
Thank you, Councilmember Ringsocker. Any further questions or comments from the council? I'm gonna do a roll call, vote council, be prepared. Councilmembers Zinner?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Ringsocker?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
CP?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Council. The Resolution 2020-06 is adopted by a roll call vote of 6-0 and affirmative. Item B, Charter Amendment Resolution Concerning in Addition to the Charter to Permit Emergency Executive Powers During a State of Declared Emergency. I'll defer to Council President Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I introduce for appropriate action the Charter Amendment to Permit Emergency Executive Powers.
Council have a motion by the Council President, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Ringsocker. Questions or comments on the introduction of this resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce Charter Amendment Resolution carries 6-0 and affirmative. This will be Charter Amendment Resolution 286. 286. "A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Constitution, Article 11E, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and the Havertagh Grace City Charter, Section 19, amending City Charter, Section 18, by adding subsection D, enumerating emergency executive powers during a declared state of emergency." Council have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
First one to Council President, seconded by Councilmember Ringsocker. Question or comments on the charter change resolution? Council President?
Okay. This charter amendment is being proposed in response to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Current charter is silent as to specific mayor authority in times of emergency declaration. The proposed Charter Amendment Resolution would amend the city charter, adding a new section providing the mayor limited emergency executive powers when the state of emergency is declared. It would allow the mayor to suspend or extend timelines and/or deadlines as set forth in the charter. Keep in mind, cannot extend for more than 30 days following the lifting of the state of emergency. The mayor can postpone or suspend city election for up to 60 days. Charter also gives the mayor the authority to issue executive orders pertaining to the use of city property. For instance, the closing of a playground, the closing of a promenade in the given, given a storm, setting up the community center to do testing during a medical emergency, and the list goes on. This charter amendment is comparable to the executive orders issued by the governor of state of Maryland. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Further questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer?
I just want to quickly say that this is the purpose of an executive, and any of these actions done by the executive, we, as a council, could come back together, if I'm correct, April, and undo what they've done if we so identify that what they've done is above and beyond what is reasonable. We could come together as a quorum and vote to change it, correct?
Well, our, my current reading of the charter is that the charter did not enumerate these types of powers, and these are the types of things that the city council would rule on. For example, city property, use of city property would be an example. So yes, if the council thought the mayor was overstepping, the council could come back and undo that, because ordinarily, under the charter, those are, those are within the realm of the charter duties of the council.
Right, and it's completely understandable that when our forefathers wrote this charter, they did not even have in their minds the concept of saving emergency to the scale that we are in currently, for the length that we're in currently. So it makes complete sense, and I, I'm all for it. Thank you.
And if I may add, it actually, it delineates it, I think, in a way that we've experienced it from a practical standpoint, whereas the current reading of the charter, one could argue that it's implied authority of the mayor, and the concern was, well, how much is that authority? And this, I think, gives more clarity, and based on what the, the orders that the governor has issued, and when you compare it to the local emergency powers that the city is already allowed to do under the state, local government article, that when you looked at all of that, this was very consistent with the purposes of that as well.
Thank you, April.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyer. Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Council President Glenn and to Mayor Martin for giving up a lot of their weekend to talk to me about this. You know, we had some very academic discussions, you know, just about theory of government and everything, because for me, it's absolutely necessary at the federal level and at the state level for certain powers to reside in the executive, because like in this case, for example, it's very difficult to pull folks from all over the state or all over the country together to form a legislative body and make laws expeditiously. However, you know, city Havertagh Grace, we're all within like a five-mile radius, so that's maybe not entirely outside of the realm of possibility. But as myself and Council President Glenn discussed, you know, there, this council is pretty well congealed. I think that we get along pretty well, and you know, we can debate and deliberate rather maturely, and that hasn't always been the case, and that likely won't always be the case. And you don't want a situation where some folks that are in office might be at odds with each other, or at odds with the administration, and decide to play politics when there's a pandemic, for one. And for two, this is basically, we, we, the legislative body, just for an understanding, give the mayor authority to do certain things with city property already. He executes all of the laws that we pass here as legislators. So, you know, mainly through the budget authority right now, and the mayor would go ahead and execute whatever we pass as a plan. This is just saying ahead of time that in this specific case, for a limited amount of time, the mayor can exercise that same authority that we've already granted to him to, to the best of his knowledge, what he sees fit. And Councilman Boyer, you're absolutely right. I mean, we can come together and, you know, overturn a decision or revoke the statute for something else if it needs to be refined for whatever reason. So it's not an end-all-be-all. It's not, I wouldn't say that it's a power grab by the executive. I never thought it was, you know, but it is just something that you, you don't want to take lightly. So I want everybody to understand that the folks here didn't take this lightly. We're not giving council authority to the mayor. The mayor's not, you know, going to be the end-all-be-all of every decision that's ever made here in the city of Havertagh Grace.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Any further questions or comments? Council President?
And keep in mind, we're talking about a state of emergency, and one thing that came to my mind was like, we're a waterfront community, and let's say a storm comes up quickly, and the mayor gets a phone call and says, "The water's breaking over top of the promenade. Should we shut it down?" Well, maybe we don't have time to really get council's approval on something like that, and so what you want to do is you want to do a quick decision to make sure that at the end of the day, we protect our most valuable resource, and that's people. And I think that's the intent of this, you know, amendment, and that's why I think it should go forward for approval.
Councilmember Ringsocker?
Mr. Mayor, Council, even at the local level, the behemoth of government has always been less than nimble, and I strongly see the necessity for, you know, granting the mayor the authority to take action in extenuating circumstances like this, and not requiring, as suggested by previous councilmember Kokendorfer, a supermajority vote, because the mayor needs to have the ability to act in times of these extenuating circumstances, and just convening the council, as spoken before, if we might not be able to pull a quorum, or we'd have to sit there and deliberate the wording as to whether or not a supermajority, where if we wrote in five councilmembers, what happens if our quorum is only four members that night, and, you know, a supermajority of that members, or we can't bring up five because we don't have five members able to come? Small little intricacies like that. In 1785, William Pitt, then, he was the Prime Minister of England, he said, "Necessity is a plea of every infringement of human freedom. It is the argument of tyrants; it is a creed of slaves." And it's one of my favorite quotes, and this isn't exactly like a, an issue like that where we're saying that there's necessity, some sort of dire emergency right now, where we need to make sure we're giving away all of our rights and all of our freedoms to the mayor. We're giving him the ability to run the government of the city in these extenuating circumstances until we're able to convene again for the proper council and for the proper, you know, modus of government that we currently have. And I have no problem with it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ringsocker. Any further questions or comments? Councilmember Zinner?
Thank you. I just want to say that I agree with all the comments that have been made this evening. I think this current emergency that we have, and this situation that has not happened in 100 years, calls for extraordinary circumstances, and I think there needs to be the ability to respond to those extraordinary circumstances. And one of the things, we see the number of cases that are present in Maryland, how many deaths there's been in Maryland, but it's by county and not by zip code until recently. And I would look at that, and I would think, well, what if there's some special circumstances in Havertagh Grace where the numbers are higher than what we would see? So if it was a special hotspot, not, you know, just considering everything's a hotspot. And what would I want the executive to be able to do? Well, I would want the executive to be able to do what they see is important. There's only three municipalities in Harper County, and I think each of those executives needs to be able to have the leeway, and I really do not believe we need a supermajority to, to put that into place and to make it a reality. So I definitely agree with the way this is written.
Thank you, Councilmembers Zinner. Thank you for your comments. Any further questions or comments?
Not.
Robertson?
Not to belabor the point too much, Mr. Mayor, but this is, I mean, one could say, yeah, this absolutely already, the mayor is already executing this authority that is implied. Case in point, the state of emergency is set by the state of Maryland because of a snowstorm, and, you know, DPW is out of money in their budget to get salt for the trucks. Is the mayor going to come to council to do a budget amendment right then and there to make sure that there's enough money so that we can buy the salt? Or is the mayor just going to go ahead and purchase the salt, and we can take care of it legislatively on the back end? And I think any reasonable person would say, well, in that time, we would want the mayor to have the authority to go ahead and do what needs to be done, and then, you know, if there is something in that case that would require legislative action, we can do it on the back end. So, again, not to beat the point too much, but we're not, we're not giving the mayor any more authority than what's already in precedent.
Thank you. No further questions? I'll do a roll call. Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner?
Yes.
Council President Glenn?
Yes.
Councilmember Ringsocker?
Yes.
By roll call vote of 6-0 and the affirmative, Charter Amendment Resolution 286 is adopted. Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate the deliberation back and forth. And just a quick comment, because I usually don't comment when people are deliberating, but, yeah, these are very narrow allowances. It only addresses mayoral authority specifically to a state of emergency. Again, the charter does say specifically that the mayor is the chief executive officer of the city, over the city, its employees, and its property. There's a lot of latitude in what this office does, but just to make sure that everything we do from this office is actually explicit, not implied, the charter is kind of silent when it comes to things such as suspending or extending deadlines. And that is basically what happened tonight. So later on this evening, we may be voting on suspending the election temporarily because of the COVID-19 pandemic. What the council did this evening is made everything completely legal for us to do that. So, thank you very much, Council. Okay, we're gonna go to item C, Charter Amendment, Section 13, Election Hours, and we're gonna go to Council President on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I introduce for appropriate action Charter Amendment on Elections.
Okay. Council have a motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Martin. This is a motion to introduce a Charter Amendment on Section 13, Deals of Election Hours. Questions or comments on the introduction of this resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduce a Charter Amendment on Section 13, Election Hours, carries 6-0 and the affirmative. I'm gonna read the header real quick and through the record. "A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Constitution, Article 11E, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and the Havertagh Grace City Charter, Section 19, amending City Charter, Section 13, Elections and Hours, by granting authority to temporarily suspend the city election on May 5, 2020." This is gonna be Charter Amendment Number 287 for the record. 287. Council, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Question or comments on the resolution? Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This charter amendment is being proposed in response to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. This legislation would amend the city charter in accordance with the governor's executive order, enabling municipalities to postpone elections without having to comply with the required public hearing and the 40-day wait period. Additionally, it would align the city law with the executive orders issued by the governor and guidelines issued by the Center of Disease Control.
issued by the Center of Disease Control, requiring social distancing and prohibiting gatherings of more than 10 people. Holding a routine election during a pandemic would somewhat encourage people to violate CDC guidelines. This Charter Amendment gives the mayor the authority to issue an executive order during the declared state of emergency, allowing the temporary suspension of the May 5, 2020 election. It must be rescheduled within 60 days after the state of emergency is lifted.
Thank you, Council President. Any further questions or comments? Sushak.
Mayor, if I could give a little background on this, because it's a little different than the other one we just, that the council just voted on.
Please.
This resolution came about as a result of a governor's executive order. I worked with attorneys from the Maryland Municipal Attorneys Association. There was concern from various jurisdictions throughout the state of Maryland that their charters required elections during a time when the governor had issued stay-at-home orders and social distancing requirements. So when the attorneys got together, some of them spoke with, actually the president of that association spoke directly with counsel at the governor's office, and the governor's office was concerned that it would be stepping on the toes of the individual municipalities because they're charter governments. So recognizing that charter governments are governed by their charters, that what the governor did was issued an executive order that said the, the local municipalities can waive the requirements for charter amendments, which ordinarily apply, which would be public hearing, which we just had with the other one this evening, and also the 40-day referendum wait period for the citizen referendum potentiality if they, if they get enough signatures. So by doing this as a separate amendment to the charter, the hearing requirement and the 40-day wait period are waived, and it can become effective immediately upon adoption. That is the reason for doing this as a separate Charter Amendment, because of the emergency nature of the election coming up May 5, and the governor recognizing there wasn't enough time for the municipalities to be able to amend their charters in time to cancel the elections.
Thank you very much for your explanation, Ms. Sushak. Thank you. Any further question or comments for the roll call vote? This is on Charter Amendment 287, dealing with election hours. Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember, or Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Councilmember Ringzacher.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six-zero and the affirmative, Charter Amendment 287 is adopted by this council. Thank you very much, counsel. Move on to Item D, Resolutions Seeking Approval for Alternative Voting Practices. And I will once again go to the Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to introduce for appropriate action the resolution for approval of alternative voting practices.
Counsel, I have a motion by the Council President, seconded by
Second.
by Councilmember Martin. This is a resolution seeking approval for alternative voting practices. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce resolution carries six-zero and affirmative. Counsel, this is going to be Resolution 2020-07, 2020-07. A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, City Charter Sections 33 and 34, and City Code Section 61-7 concerning the method of casting ballots at the May 5, 2020 election. Counsel, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Questions or comments on the resolution? Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This again is being proposed in response to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. It would alter the method of casting ballots if the May 5, 2020 election could be held. The city must ensure it can proceed and be in compliance with the governor's executive orders and CDC guidelines. With that being said, citizens would be strongly encouraged to request absentee ballots. For those voting in person, the city could adopt one of two options. Option A, voting in City Hall council chambers. No more than 10 people in City Hall at a time. Maintain social distancing, which would be six feet. Wear protective masks. One-way direction only would be set up. Option B would be drive-through voting. Would entail voters to remain in their vehicles. Voters would be qualified by election judges. Voters would receive the ballot and return to election judges. Will only work weather permitting. Recommend only one person in a vehicle at a time because of so, social distancing requirements. Voters without a vehicle and didn't request absentee ballots would be instructed to City Hall and vote in accordance with option A discussed previously. Walk-up voters must wear masks. Instructions for the method of casting ballots under option A or option B would be posted on the city's website and at City Hall no later than 24 hours prior to Election Day.
Thank you very much, Council President. Any other questions or comments on Resolution 2020-07? Counsel will be prepared for roll call. Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Councilmember Ringzacher.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. By roll call vote of six-zero and the affirmative, Resolution 2020-07 is adopted by this council. Item E, Resolution Concerning the Extinguishment, Termination, and Abandonment of Interest and Property. Councilmember Ringzacher.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, you just said what I'm going to say. I'm going to introduce, make a motion to introduce a resolution concerning the extinguishment, termination, and abandonment of the interest and property.
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Ringzacher, seconded by the Council President. This is a motion to introduce a resolution on extinguishment, termination, and abandonment of interest and property. Questions or comments on the introduction of this resolution? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Introduction of resolution carries six-zero and the affirmative. Counsel, this will be Resolution 2020-08, 2020-08. A resolution by the mayor and city council of Havertagh Grace, Maryland pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, City Charter Sections 33 and 34, and 75 concerning the extinguishment, termination, and abandonment of an interest in property. Counsel, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Ringzacher, seconded by the Council President. Questions or comments, Councilmember Ringzacher?
Mr. Mayor, this is a really interesting case. So the owners of Concord Cove apartment complex decided they're going to sell the property. And in the process of that, they did a real property title search and found that on the original plat map, there was supposed to be a cul-de-sac that never got developed. And on the plans for the original cul-de-sac, as with all other developments around town, they eventually deed that over to the city for maintenance and, you know, snowplow stuff like that. Well, because it was never built, it never got deeded over to the city. That portion of property is currently their parking lot, or part of their parking lot, a small portion of it. So the city still has, back to, I think it was like 1984 when it was built, they still have a claim of intention for that. We're just abandoning that, stating that we have no property rights there, no, we're abandoning all claim to that property, that small little portion of parking lot, so they can proceed with the sale of the property. It was never deeded to the city. The original plat map showed that cul-de-sac, and it was never made. So I do make that motion, Mr. Mayor. Well, already did.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ringzacher. Appreciate the background on it. Any other further questions or comments on this resolution?
I got one.
Council President.
So basically, what we're saying is, if approved, this will continue to be used as paid parking, as it's done for the last 50 years.
Nothing would change, sir. Actually, all we're saying is that we have no claim to that portion of parking lot because it was never actually deeded to us.
Absolutely.
Nothing physically was signed or took place to transfer the property to us. It's not our property. They had originally intended to deed it to us. There are actually several other properties around town similar to that, throughout neighborhoods where maybe the plat was changed for whatever reason when they built the houses. For instance, my own house, that shows a small little house in the back, my backyard. So plat maps change when they develop the developments. And so this is one of those instances where they didn't develop that cul-de-sac, so they never actually deeded it to us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Council President. Any further questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to take a roll call vote on Resolution 2020-08. Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Council President Glenn.
Yes.
Councilmember Ringzacher.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Zinner.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six-zero and the affirmative, Council Resolution 2020-08 is adopted by this council. Thank you very much. Good. Item number nine, ordinances. Item number 10, we have no ordinances this evening. Item 10, old business. We have no old business to address this evening. Item 11, new business. Before I get into new business, there are several budget amendments, and I'm going to ask my Director of Finance to join us in one second. Just hang tight.
Stand by with the nice music.
So what do y'all think about Tiger King? Yeah?
Man, I'm never going to recover this financially.
I haven't watched it. I refuse to watch it.
Carol Baskin.
So y'all want a refund or something? Oh, that was probably the best. That was a great one. I just want to know.
I think everyone in Havertagh Grace has watched the Tiger King. I really do.
Oh, I'm sure. But like, why, why, why did he come out in EMS jacket? Like, did he go and get changed?
I had a friend.
She had her arm bitten off by a tiger, so he was in the right outfit.
I had a friend tell me that he thinks that's what happens at Havertagh Grace football games, when one of the kids get hurt, is that people just come out of the woodwork with their firefighter jackets on. And I said, it actually is kind of true.
Well, yeah. I mean, that's real.
George, hurry up.
We can still talk about him. He's not here yet.
I expected him to be needed so quickly. Here we come.
There he is.
George!
Welcome, Mr. DeHordy. You can just go to the podium real quick. We're going to do our budget amendments, and I just wanted to make sure that as we do this, that all of our numbers and our account numbers are correct, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Pleased to be here, sir.
Okay. Okay, thank you, counsel, for your patience. Just let the audience at home know that when I bring someone in, I have to ask somebody to leave. So we have to make sure we keep our numbers under 10. And we're at 9, by the way, in case you're wondering. So we're below the limit. We're going to go to new business, item A, Budget Amendment 2020-11. Councilmember Robertson.
Hey. Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce Budget Amendment 2020-11.
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Zinner. This is a motion to approve Budget Amendment 2020-11. Question or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Budget Amendment 2020-11 carries six-zero and the affirmative. Councilmember Robertson, being the Chair of the Finance Committee, would you like to read the numbers into the record?
Sure. So in the from column, account number 01-0001-4897, CDBG grant, $45,600. In the to column, account number 01-1251-7087, Lockhouse Shad Pond, $45,600.
Mr. DeHordy, all the numbers correct?
Yes, sir, they are.
Mr. DeHordy, for the viewing public at home, can you give a brief synopsis of what that budget transfer was about, please?
Yes, sir. That was to complete a grant project that the council previously had approved, some emergency funding to get it started, that was getting ready to expire. That was 2020-10, which was done on March 16. But basically, it's to complete the Shad Pond Restoration Project. The county is funding it. It's 100% funded by CDBG funds, so there is no tax dollars going toward it from the city. And it's, the initial reviews we've had have been terrific, sir.
Excellent. Thank you very much for the synopsis, Mr. DeHordy. Appreciate it. And thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. We're going to go to item B, Budget Amendment 2020-12. Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce Budget Amendment 2020-12.
Counsel, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Ringzacher. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Budget Amendment 2020-12 carries six-zero and the affirmative. Councilmember Robertson.
In the from column, account number 01-0001-4897, CDBG grant, $50,000. In the to column, account number 01-1251-7091, ADA bathrooms for the Opera House, $50,000.
Mr. DeHordy, is those correct numbers?
Yes, sir, they are.
And may we have a brief synopsis of the budget transfer?
Yes, sir. This budget transfer is to increase funding that was created by the winding down of our RED loan program. The Opera House bathroom over at the Firehouse Two is going to come in a little higher than expected as they got into it. And the, the state graciously agreed to up their grant support. And again, this is being funded by the state this time, but there are not tax dollars going to this budget amendment at all. It's completely state-funded through the wind, the funds that came through the RED loan wind-down. That has been going on for a couple of years now.
Mr. DeHordy, thank you very much for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Robertson.
Cool.
We have, we amended the agenda earlier for the additional budget amendment, which is going to be Budget Amendment 2020-13. And Councilmember Robertson.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce Budget Amendment 2020-13.
Second.
Hold on, one second. I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, seconded by Councilmember Martin. Questions or comments on this budget amendment? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Budget Amendment 2020-13 carries six-zero and the affirmative. Councilmember Robertson, do you have the numbers in front of you?
Cool. Yes.
Okay.
In the from column, account number 01-0001-4101, real property taxes, $34,800. In the to column, 01-1131-6501, additional Susquehanna Host Company contributions, $38,800.
Mr. DeHordy, numbers correct?
The actual was 34-8. It was stated as 38-8 by Councilman Robertson, but it's 34-8.
I said 34-8, didn't I?
Did you?
You did in the from, but not to the to.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, 34-8 in the from.
$34,800 is correct.
I was just seeing if you're paying attention.
Yes, sir.
All right, 34-8 is the correct number. Mr. DeHordy, can I call upon you one more time for a brief synopsis?
Sure. Especially with the recent events. Sure. Especially with the recent events, the Susquehanna Host Company has found themselves running short on operating funds. And then they reached out to the city to see if there was any way we can help them keep going during this time of need. And what we're doing is some of the additional real property taxes that were billed and awarded this last July, you've heard me say several times, that we've been higher than expected. We've redirected those to the host company in this time of their need so that they can continue to serve the citizens of Havertagh Grace as needed.
Excellent. Mr. DeHorty, thank you very much for your, for your time. Thank you very much for your verification and your synopsis. Could you please have Ms. Ishack rejoin us?
I will do so.
Thank you. Actually, could you have Mr. Seipolt join us, actually?
I will do that.
Thank you very much.
Man, you see who's important.
Well, the next item is the farmer's market, and Mr. Seipolt knows much more about that than.
I figured.
City Attorney does.
I figured.
So, hello, Mr. Seipolt.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council.
Um, we are going, the next order of business is the farmer's market, and I just ask if you, if any councilmembers have any questions, I just ask you to be in a room with us here, so. Um, so, we have item C under New Business Special Events, and we only have one item, and that is going to be to approve the Havertagh Grace Farmer's Market from May second to November twenty first. Council, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Councilmember Ringsocker, seconded by Councilmember Boyer. Questions or comments? Council President.
First off, I wanna thank the city staff for, for reaching out to Bel Air and kinda pick their brain for lessons learned relative to their farmer's market. This pandemic is a real challenge time for us, and to really pick Bel Air's brain for lessons learned was, I think, a really smart move on the city of Havertagh Grace's part. Um, my only really question and concern is, is when I look at the vendor setup, I really think we should realign vendor seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-nine. Um, that's close to the residential property in that area, and I think if we move that, it'd be better for all concerned. So that's my proposal, is to move those to another location that doesn't really infringe on that residential property.
Councilmember Boyer.
Just to clarify, infringe means being able to go into and out of that property, right? It doesn't necessar, you didn't mean anything else by infringe, right?
Right.
Thank you.
Seipolt, was there any issues with what the Council President said?
I don't foresee any issues with that. This was, this is just a preliminary layout. I believe we can still accommodate the executive order as passed down by the governor, an exercise here in this city. And we can also move some of the vendors down closer to the water, perhaps, along the, the walkway towards the water's edge, which would actually make a fairly scenic location.
Thank you. Further questions or comments on the farmer's market? Sir?
Uh, I, I wanna echo Council President's comments that, you know, y'all did a great job with the layout. I couldn't agree more with reopening the farmer's market, but specifically with how you guys have it mapped out there. So, great job. I think it's the right thing to do. And I'm looking forward to going down there myself.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Any further questions or comments? Councilmember Boyer.
Just one more comment. I wanna say thank you very much for the flexibility and the creative thinking that's been involved, not only with the farmer's market, but also with the promenade, being able to make sure that we, make sure that we have access to our parks and other public areas. To my knowledge, we haven't closed, other than the playgrounds, any other public space, correct?
That is correct.
So, being able to keep that, I think, and for everybody to be able to, again, keep six feet away from each other and take responsibility for their own health and staying away. I think that's wonderful, and I really wanna express my appreciation to the staff for going the extra mile to make sure that we, the citizens of Havertagh Grace, can still enjoy our public spaces. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sure the staff is very appreciative. Thank you all very much for working with them on this.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Boyer, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, here's the vote on the farmer's market for May second to November twenty first, two thousand and twenty. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Farmer's Market is approved, six zero in the affirmative. Thank you very much, council. Appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna go to business from the mayor. Couple of things. Well, we haven't been together in about a month. We canceled the April sixth council meeting because of the COVID- nineteen pandemic. At the time, we didn't have anything pressing that we had a, we had to put forth, and we thought it'd be better for everyone's health if we did. This evening, obviously, we have some matters of importance that needed to be addressed, and we did the best we could to hold this council meeting as normal as possible, and normal as possible means still allowing citizens the opportunity to in-person address this council on the agenda items that we had on the agenda tonight. We had to get a little creative, a little shifty, moving personnel in and out to stay under the ten-person limit, but we were able to do it, and we're wrapping up towards the end of the meeting here with, with my comments and the council comments. We will be skipping the director's comments this evening and just sticking to some important items. So, I just wanna say that I'm extremely proud of the city of Havertagh Grace, the people who are in it, and the spirit that people give towards this COVID pandemic. Although people have been affected differently in different ways. I can't be more proud of how our citizens are putting forth their civic responsibility when it comes to obeying or being compliant to the governor's orders. And I feel it's not just because the governor makes an executive order. I feel that it's the people in Havertagh Grace are smart enough to realize that if we're going to get out of this and get out of this situation as quickly and least scaved as possible, that we need to take responsibility. And I see that. I see that, you know, when we go around town, the, the businesses are, some of the businesses had to close, some businesses are still able to operate under modifications. I see citizens practicing the social distancing. Now we're to the point where we wear face masks whenever we know we're gonna have transactions out in public or public transportation. And I truly believe in my heart, it's gonna be communities like the city of Havertagh Grace around this country that are ultimately gonna slow down and put an end to this pandemic. And I commend my fellow citizens for being very responsible. I know no one enjoys the restrictions that we have, and, and over this long month we've been quarantined, uh, simple pleasures in life are starting to be longed for. Just to go to a movie, have some movie popcorn, or, you know, go to a restaurant and have a fancy drink that the bartender makes or something like that. Uh, these small pleasures in life that we took for granted on a daily basis are beginning to wear upon many people. But I do believe that we have more days behind us and ahead of us, hopefully, and that if we keep being responsible and being good to one another and being respectful and doing the best we can to stay safe, not only for ourselves and our families, but also for others, that we'll be out of this mess as soon as possible. I want everyone to know that this government continues to work every day to provide the services that are necessary. When you turn the faucet on, there will be clean cold water coming through the pipes. When you flush the toilet, we'll make sure there's a place for it to go. Um, any pipe breaks or water main breaks on the street, we'll fix them right away. When you pick up the phone and call the police, they will come. If there's a fire, the host company will come. If you need ambulatory services, the Havertagh Grace Ambulance Corps will come. These are the services that are provided on a daily basis, and the services that will make sure that our citizens will not suffer or see a decline in. So I wanna commend our city staff and our first responders for being here every single day, um, ready to serve the citizens of Havertagh Grace. As a citizen of Havertagh Grace, do their duty and their responsible civic duty for the quarantine. Um, we did have to make modifications with our personnel. We have some working homes, some working on duty, then we, they shift them back and forth. As everyone in this country knows, this COVID- nineteen is a moving target. It's very difficult to predict what one day the next is gonna bring. But I want everyone to know that this city government hasn't dropped the ball one bit, and we're here for you when you need us. Couple of highlights. Uh, in the last month, we found out that the General Assembly has approved a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a redevelopment plan for the auditorium, high school auditorium, when the county turns it over to the city of Havertagh Grace, the Auditorium Genasium. The Havertagh Grace Performing Arts Center also received a hundred thousand dollar grant from the General Assembly. Currently, uh, the city is working on several upgrades at the water treatment plant. Are swapping out some old pipes and putting some new pipes and doing a lot of repairs in the water treatment plant. We've also begun construction of the ADA bathroom and access on the second floor of the Opera House. So, if many of you have been to the Performing Arts Center at the Opera House, you're probably aware there's no bathroom on the second floor. Well, we've actually begun to, um, there's a connection bridge that goes to the top floor of the Fire Department, House Two. And we began to do some improvements there, so we can now connect the Opera House to the top floor of House Two for the Fire Department. And it's gonna be fixed up so it could be a meeting room, and so the Opera House can use it. There'll be bathrooms and ADA accessibility there. So we've been busy at work. Also, I wanna let everyone know Havertagh Grace has three soup kitchens in town, St. John's Cupboard, Grace Place, and Kitchen Door. They have continued to operate during COVID- nineteen. Uh, they continue to give food and prepare, prepare meals to those who need them the most, and they can use donations. Anybody has any food they could spare, whether it's dry goods or, or any kind of fresh or frozen meat, canned goods is wise, please. And if you wish to donate it and just don't know where to send it, please reach out, reach out to my executive assistant, Ms. Risa Laird at City Hall, nine three nine, nine three nine, eighteen hundred, and ask for Ms. Risa Laird, executive assistant to the mayor, and she will be happy to let you know where you can take the food. So they are always in need of food, especially in times like these. And another project that the city's been doing, since everyone's staying in, it's a good time to work on indoor projects. So we have completely repainted the community center, a fresh coat of paint, and wanna understand, people watching me right now can see behind me that there's some pictures behind me that, um, I wasn't sure if you could see these or not on film. I was gonna wait, but I'll tell you now. We kinda gave the council chamber a facelift over this past month. Uh, we freshened up the walls with a nice, um, paint color. Uh, and also, we put new carpet down. The carpet, old carpet was almost thirty years old with all the stains that went with it. Uh, and so, and also, we, uh, we actually are lucky enough to have a local artist who works for Department of Public Works. His name is Ezra Berger. And Ezra, um, came in here and painted the murals that go around in a circle. There's twenty-two panels that go in a circle around this chamber. And he painted each panel, Havertagh Grace Historic Scene. And I'm only saying that, I was gonna wait, but I'm only saying that because people are telling me, oh, you can see the background on the camera, and I didn't want people to not know what this is, so. When the, when the COVID pandemic ends and we can all go outside and play again, um, we are gonna have an open, open house right away so citizens can come in here and see the history of Havertagh Grace as captured on all twenty-two panels by a local artist. Um, so it's, it's a beautiful job he did, and the council chamber looks absolutely beautiful, has a nice Chesapeake theme to it. And we hope when we're able to get out of the house and have people once again in this chamber, that, that you'll feel that it really represents the city of Havertagh Grace. And I have one more thing to say. Oh, one more thing before, one more thing to say. Um, there have been things that have been, one of the things we voted on tonight was, um, uh, the ability of the mayor's office to affect city property, such as closed playgrounds or, or, um, you know, the Opera House was closed, the community center was closed, and a lot of people talked about the promenade. The promenade is a, a big focal point in the city of Havertagh Grace for many citizens. It's, it's just absolutely beautiful. It, it walks you from Tidings Park Marina all the way to the Lighthouse. Um, it's beautiful scenery. Uh, you can always capture nature there. The bay looks beautiful. It really is a jewel of our city. And I know that the county came out and just closed a lot of parks and playgrounds completely. But in Havertagh Grace, I, I, we, we wanted to take a more, you know, methodical approach. And so we closed the playgrounds because we believe children, you know, don't understand at a very young age what it means to touch something and to touch your face, and we're worried about kids protecting themselves. Um, we kept the parks open in general because we believe that the responsibility should fall on the citizens to exercise their best responsibility and judgment and to practice social distancing. Um, and I truly believe, I really believe that the best thing you can do sometimes is get out of your house and get sunshine and fresh air and soak up that vitamin D from the sun and get a little exercise, and that's why we kept the parks open and hoping that people will themselves exercise their own social distancing and best judgment. But one of the things that's been a little controversial is the promenade. A lot of people walk the promenade constantly still. It's, some people, for some people who've told me, it's the highlight of their day. They get out of the house for thirty minutes a day, they walk the promenade. That's their sanity, that's their peace of mind, and we didn't wanna have to close the sanity, or closing, close the promenade down and take it away from people completely, and we wanted to err on the side of the citizens to make their judgment first. And so what we did as a city is, we made the promenade one way. Uh, you enter the promenade from the Tidings Park Yacht Basin, and you walk along the promenade and exit towards Concord Point Lighthouse. And you're supposed to walk back, either going up Lafayette Street or another street, down Market Street, back to the Tidings Park Marina. We did it one way from the Tidings Park Marina because that's where the biggest parking lot is, uh, for people to start their journey. Uh, for the most part, um, the One Direction has been adhered to pretty well, although not always. I just want citizens to know that, um, is it the law? You have to go one way? As one citizen asked me, and I said, it's not the law. It's, you know, we like to say it's required, but, um, you have to know that if people enter from one side and people enter from the other side, then somewhere in the middle, you're gonna have thirty, forty people in each other's path. And so I'm asking everyone to work together. I think we can get through this without having to close the promenade, but if, if it becomes an issue, uh, we have to look for, look out for people's safety as well. So the promenade's gonna stay open with One Direction signage, and we ask anyone who walks on a promenade, if you don't wanna walk around along the way back up Lafayette Street and Commerce Street, then don't walk on the promenade, okay? It's, that's what I'm gonna say to you, 'cause some people said to me they don't wanna walk up a hill. Then, then keep that in mind. Because if people see other people breaking the rules, hey, I'm a middle school teacher. Once kids see other kids break the rules, everybody breaks the rules. So I'm asking everybody, we're gonna keep the promenade open because sunshine, fresh air, scenic beauty is a mental release and escape for some people in this pandemic. We're keeping the promenade open. Please follow the rules. Now, to the last thing I wanna talk about. The last ten days has been, um, uh, quite an experience here in the city of Havertagh Grace. I was originally gonna give, I was originally gonna give Upper Chesapeake Hospital a pass during this whole pandemic thing, and just let them do their job, and we'll do our job. But that didn't, that wasn't the case. So many people know for many years now that Upper Chesapeake, University of Maryland, Upper Chesapeake Hospital has been wanting to close down the hospital and replace it with a freestanding medical facility. Now, a freestanding medical facility, um, is not a hospital. Um, it's a facility that has, um, observation beds. Uh, they call them emergency beds, although understand that you're really not allowed to refer to it as emergency room. Uh, they can't handle priority one or two patients. They can handle stroke, but they can't han, I understand they can handle stroke, at least that's what they're saying, but they can't handle cardiac arrest, uh, major trauma, uh, brain injuries, car accidents. And a lot of those injuries will have to be diverted to a hospital, which at that point would either be Elkton, Union Memorial in Elkton, or you'd have to go to Upper Chesapeake Hospital. Our issue all along with the University of Maryland, Upper Chesapeake Hospital was if you're leaving Havertagh you're leaving Havertagh Grace and you're going to Aberdeen, at least build a hospital in Aberdeen. They were going to build their freestanding medical facility at our interchange at 155, also known as the Bully Rock property. I don't think they understood the cost of developing raw land, or there were other factors involved, but they decided to go to Aberdeen. And the city did nothing to push them away. We did no, you know, unfair treatment. We didn't move goalposts. We didn't have unpredictable approval processes. We treated them as we would treat anybody, and they chose to go to Aberdeen. Well, you know what? This is United States of America, they're free to do that. What the city of Havertagh Grace did do is we asked questions that we couldn't seem to get answers for, questions that the Maryland Healthcare Commission also had and couldn't seem to get answers for. And in this process, University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake tried their best to marginalize the city of Havertagh Grace, and every time we would speak out, they would begin their whisper campaign, you know, around Bel Air and Reston County, that Havertagh Grace is sour grapes because we're losing a hospital. And anytime Havertagh Grace says something, it's just because they're mad that they lost a hospital. Nothing can be further from the truth. The city of Havertagh Grace is the only government in Harford County that actually questioned the product that Upper Chesapeake was selling. And returned, the hospital pulled away from Havertagh Grace and went to Aberdeen where they didn't question them. So this has been the issue we are at constant, at the moment right now, but in order for Upper Chesapeake to close their hospital, they need approval from the Maryland Healthcare Commission. They've had their application at the Maryland Healthcare Commission for several years and hasn't been approved. We've been waiting and waiting and waiting for the applications to be put on the agenda for the Maryland Healthcare Commission to be approved, and it just hasn't. It's been, they've been quiet on the matter. Well, we found out last week, just by chance, just by chance that we have a city employee who happens to go on the Maryland Healthcare Commission website every week, that he found that the April 16th Healthcare Commission agenda had on item number five, the closure of Hartford Memorial Hospital. Now, I said I was going to give Hartford, Upper Chesapeake Hospital a break during this pandemic because they had a job to do, but I find it extremely troublesome that on agenda, with all these hospitals looking to increase beds because of the pandemic, item number five buried on this agenda was the item to approve the closure of Upper Chesapeake Hospital. Now, they're not going to close tomorrow. It's going to be a couple of years until they build a freestanding medical facility and move over there. But the, but the argument was this. People are losing their lives, their livelihoods. This economy will take decades to recover from this pandemic. Everyone with a brain, half a brain, quarter of a brain knows that when this is over, we're going to step back and really have to reevaluate healthcare, not only in the state of Maryland, but this country. We will start reevaluating the importance of a hospital, no matter what size it is, the importance of having that room near a nursing station that can give you that immediate help. As this country over the last several decades has tried to contract and get smaller, more efficient, I believe that COVID-19 is a game changer. So when we found out on, um, over a week ago that this was going to be voted on at the Maryland Healthcare Commission to allow Upper Chesapeake to close their hospital, we began a letter, a letter writing campaign. I wrote several letters to the governor. I emailed the governor. I just wanted five minutes of the governor's time. I didn't get it. The governor had nothing to add to the situation. It didn't surprise me because I've been writing to governor every month since September, and I just wanted five minutes of the governor's time. I know a lot of people probably think, like, cities have some kind of like bat phone to the governor. We don't even know how to get in hold of the governor. Like, it took us hours just to find out who to email my letter to, so he might get my letter. Now, a lot of people think, you know, mayors and governors talk. We don't talk. We don't talk. I needed five minutes of his time for the last seven months. I never got it. Wrote letters to all of our state senators, no reply. County Council in, no reply. County Executive, no reply. And in my letter, I asked one simple request. This is not about whether or not you're going to close down Hartford Memorial Hospital and build a freestanding medical facility. This is about the timing of it. Now, I asked everyone, can you please write a letter to the Healthcare Commission and say, listen, now's not a good time to make a paramount decision such as allowing a hospital to close in Harford County. Can we at least agree that we should wait on a decision like this until after the COVID pandemic has passed? We may need this hospital in the future. And to deaf ears, nobody replied to me. But what they did do is they wrote letters to the Healthcare Commission. The county executive strongly supported the closure of Hartford Memorial Hospital. Even implemented in his letter, I was using that Havertagh Grace was using the COVID pandemic to instill fear in people and for political agenda and gain. Even Jesse Bane from Bel Air chimed in with the Maryland Healthcare Commission and said that Havertagh Grace was using this for political gain and that closing Hartford Memorial Hospital was a well-thought-out plan and that it should be done right away. Happens, and he wrote a letter, and Curtis Buella, our own representative, says, please don't close the hospital until the health, until the freestanding medical facility is built. Well, we appreciate that, but the reality is, that's the law anyway. They can't close the hospital until the freestanding medical facility is built. So they really didn't do anything, and they know that. So nobody, none of our elected officials outside of Havertagh Grace, except for Delegate Johnson, Delegate Lasani, and County Councilman Andre Johnson, but nobody else could take the time to say to the Maryland Healthcare Commission, hey, you got to do what you got to do, close the hospital if you have to, but can you wait until the pandemic's over? Even the director of the Maryland Healthcare Commission, his name is Ben Steffen, said, "Upper Chesapeake has been waiting too long. We need to approve this form." That's a quote I listened to in the meeting. This is after the only doctor that actually voted on this, there was a doctor whose last name's O'Connor, voted against the closure of Hartford Memorial because he said, hey, look, there's going to be a big paradigm shift in healthcare after this COVID-19 pandemic. We're not going to know what's going to happen. I think we should wait and vote on this after this is over. And his response was from the director of Maryland Healthcare Commission, "Upper Chesapeake's waited long enough." Well, that's a great, that's awesome. So we just sealed the fate of healthcare in Harford County for decades because Upper Chesapeake's been waiting long enough. The mission statement of the Maryland Healthcare Commission, one of them is to deliver and make decisions on healthcare based on the current needs of Marylanders. So they took a years-old application based on the needs of healthcare from 2016 or 17, and they consider that the current needs of Maryland right in the middle of a global pandemic, the biggest healthcare crisis of a generation. So anyway, they voted. Hospital's going to be closed down at Lyle Sheldon's pleasure. He's the CEO of Upper Chesapeake. There's going to be a lot of people learning pretty soon what a freestanding medical facility is and what a freestanding medical facility isn't. And one of the biggest things you need to worry about is folks on Medicare. People on Medicare are going to be for a rude awakening when they think they got admitted to a hospital, but they only got observed at a freestanding medical facility. Wait till the bills start rolling in. So Upper Chesapeake sells a good bill of goods, but you know what? Upper Chesapeake Medical System lies to people. You know why I say they lie to people? Because they lie about the city of Havertagh Grace. And if anybody wants to challenge me on it, you come right here to my council meeting, and I'll give you a whole list of things they said about the city of Havertagh Grace that's not true. So if you're willing to lie about a municipal government to get what you want, imagine what you'll tell your patients. With that said, I'm done with my comments. So who wants to go next? Councilman Martin?
Hey. Go ahead. You led me right into my comments for tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Perception's reality. Maryland Healthcare Commission, on Good Friday, made an announcement that on April 16th, great way to celebrate my birthday, by the way, they were going to have a meeting, and agenda item number five was the closing of the hospital. Process has taken over two years to get to the point. It was gaining, you know, gaining access and asking for updated information. I posted on Facebook, I posted on This is Bully Rock, Next Door Bully Rock, I posted on This is Havertagh Grace, and I posted on You Know You're From Havertagh Grace. On the 11th, and I asked people, and I even gave them a little blurb that they could do, and I gave a list of every single representative that they could email. Mayor Martin was right. The city of Havertagh Grace did not stop working. I know Council President wrote several letters. I have copies of his letters. I know Council Member Zinner, I know Jason, and for, in fact, has done, posted, Jimmy Rensacker has, the mayor. We have a lot of people that posted and were taking a stance, and the biggest stance we were taking was, why now? Just not now. Why don't you wait until we get a little bit more information? Give the federal government, the state government, and medical professionals the opportunity to see what the new future of healthcare is going to be like. The pandemic is not anything we planned for. It's not anything the states have planned for. The governor has even said, he didn't have plans. Nobody did. So again, I asked them a question in my letter, and it was a very simple question. Why now? Both Hartford County Hospitals unable to keep up with pace with the current demand for patient care. Looking at the CHATS Region 3 report from January, prior to the epidemic, Hartford Memorial Hospital had 13 yellow alerts with an average of 5.18 hours, a total of 67 hours. Red alert, 11 of them, with an average of 17.6 hours and a total of 188.78, and reroute of six hours, or six, average of 1.8 hours and a total of 6.5. Upper Chesapeake Medical Center had 22 yellow alerts with an average of 14.8 and a total of 325.6. A red alert with seven and an average of 27.27 hours, a total of 190.89, and a reroute of 34 averages hours of 1.4, a total of 47.4. That was what I sent them in a question. Amazingly, I wrote that on Saturday morning. Saturday night, a letter came out to Lyle, from Lyle Sheldon at 6:55 PM, and he basically wrote everybody without including any municipality. The municipalities of Bel Air, Aberdeen, nor Havertagh Grace were included on his email chain. And I will be posting all this on the city website, so you can see the documentation is there. Lyle Sheldon comment, and he's president and CEO, University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake Health. In closing, thank you for your continued support of UM UCH's comprehensive healthcare delivery plan, and we ask that you take no direct action as requested by the city of Havertagh Grace leadership. And then we're going to get to the interesting parts. Barry Glassman, Jesse Bane, Russell Moy, Hartford County Health Officer, the president of the Medical Health, Medical Staff University of Upper Chesapeake, Maryland. It's interesting. Their letters to the Maryland Healthcare Commission all said, while you and perhaps the Maryland Healthcare Commissioners themselves may have received concerned letters and/or calls from selected elected officials and a small number of the public, it is important for you to be aware that those opinions and concerns are not shared consistently across the majority of elected officials here in the county, nor myself as county executive. The dramatization that is taking place and framed within the context of the COVID-19 pandemic is inappropriate and inaccurately presented on many fronts. Jesse Bane said the same thing. Down to, the dramatization that is taking place and framed in the context is unfortunate and inaccurate presented on many different fronts. Same thing from Dr. Moy. So everybody said the same thing, and it's interesting. They all used the same wording. Not one of them, they gave a different opinion at the end on what it was, but they all used the same thing, saying it was inappropriate and we didn't do anything.
Copy pasta.
On, the other question I asked is, what's the Russian moving forward on closing one of the two hospitals in Hartford, Hartford County? And why aren't they waiting to see what the future of healthcare is? Crickets is what I got back. On the 13th, I again addressed Lyle Sheldon's comment, and again, they were posted on four different social media platforms, and again, asking the question about the fact that we do not have enough healthcare with two hospitals that we're still on yellow, red, and reroutes, negatively impacting the healthcare that our citizens are receiving. The last letter I sent on the 13th ended with, as you stated, the information you are operating is several years old and did not take into account a pandemic. I believe it is time to reabout the facts based on new information of the negative impact this pandemic has had on our current healthcare infrastructure and the proper way to respond for future healthcare delivery. It is the wrong time to make such an important and permanent decision. And I included every single delegate, every single senator representing Baltimore, Hartford, Hartford, and Hartford Cecil County. Steve Johnson, Mary Ann Lasante responded back, and their comment was, any action to move forward on item five is a blatant disregard for public health and a direct assault on the health and safety of people we represent. Therefore, we respectfully ask you to remove this item from consideration until this public emergency is over and we have a better understanding of our community healthcare needs. Former mayor of Havertagh Grace, John Carrery, wrote a personal letter to the Healthcare Commission. I heard the governor tell us that he sees a light at the end of the tunnel. This is good to hear, but my father always taught me that you do see the light, but the fact of the matter is you are still in the tunnel. Let our voices be heard, save our hospital. Brian Nelson, president of Havertagh Grace Ambulance Corps. Dear sir and madam, we are writing to you to voice our concerns regarding University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake healthcare certificate of need. In light of this current state of COVID-19 pandemic and the stressed healthcare system in Hartford County prior to the pandemic, we are extremely concerned. The surge of critically ill and the unknown consequences the pandemic may have on physical structure healthcare delivery, we are vehemently opposed to the current review of UM UCH's certificate of need application at this time. Thank you for your consideration of this matter, which will have a significant impact on the lives of those living in Hartford County and the surrounding communities. They talk about the political gain. I hate to say it. I don't know what the political gain is for the members and the administration here in Havertagh Grace. We have been fighting for, since 2016, and I came on council, we have been fighting for a hospital, not a freestanding medical facility. We'd love for it to be built in Havertagh Grace, but you know what? It doesn't have to be. Aberdeen is great. It's still close enough, but really, the Route 22 Carter, where there's nothing but traffic congestion? Oh, and we're going to add floors to the Bel Air Hospital. The floors are going to be above the cancer center. Now, this was brought to my attention, and I will thank the person personally for bringing it to something that I overlooked. You're going to take people, past cancer patients on an elevator, touching all the buttons, any disease they have could be spread, to people that are already susceptible to the impact of COVID. So political gain? I'm not going anywhere. Sorry. I don't think Mayor Martin's going anywhere. I know the council president, and I've read his letters. I continue to say, and I just said it again, all I asked them was just not now. And perception is reality. We had a political gain. Why, on a holiday weekend, was something that has been on hold for over two years, magically make it on an agenda from the Maryland Healthcare Commission? Why were letters? Why were letters sent saying, ignore the leadership of Havertagh Grace? You can go on the Maryland Healthcare Commission website, type in April 20th, April 2020 meeting, you will see the agenda, you will see the letters. Surprisingly, the link to Barry Glassman’s has been deleted. The link to the other officials is still there. But if not, I have copies of all their letters. And again, I just find it amazing, they talk about, we were hiding something? We haven’t hid anything. All we said is, just not now. Allow the federal government, the state government, and medical professionals react and come up with the new direction for healthcare. We don’t have that opportunity now. Mr. Mayor, that’s all my comments for tonight, thank you.
Thank you for comments, Councilmember Martin. Councilmember Robertson, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Would everybody tell me what their opinions are on the hospital? Oh, real quick, so the Budget and Finance Committee meeting that would have been for, what is it, next Tuesday, Tuesday after the next council meeting? I think we’re going to go ahead and postpone that unless you guys have any objections. All right. Secondly, is, it’s looking like the Gravity Festival is not going to take place at the end of next month for the Youth Commission. We will have just kind of a quick huddle, some of the members, just to confirm that, but that’s the way that we’re leaning, because it’s just too early to tell if the restrictions will be lifted in time and if we can get the vendors and all to come out. Additionally, I want to give a big shout out to Paula Casa Grande for all your hustle and all the business leaders’ hustle downtown. I gotta tell you, I’ve seen some very inventive things from our bars and restaurants, Jolene Forster, you know, what she’s doing online. So, you know, just shout out to you guys, hats off to you for still, I mean, putting in the work and trying to adapt and change with, roll with the punches. But specifically, I want to call out Paula Casa Grande at Big House Signs for her work with the Legion, selling the stickers to support local groups and nonprofits, and for the signs to do the same. And if you’re not familiar, just go to bighousesigns.com and you can find it, find out what I’m talking about. But she’s also working with Mal Baker, which is like a photographer here in town, to do a special project for this year’s class of seniors. And from my understanding, Mr. Mayor, they have hit their goal. So, it’s very exciting, everything that they’re doing, these are just citizens that took it upon themselves to do something great. And yeah, you know, I’ve shared my thoughts pretty publicly about this whole hospital deal, I have been since I first ran for council in 2016, you know, and I didn’t agree then with the plans. And I know there has been a lot of legislation in Annapolis coming from our two delegates, Lasanti and Steve Johnson pertaining to this issue, everything from delaying the hospital from closing to having economic impact studies to see what it would do to the community. And, you know, those have all been fought tooth and nail by our, the rest of the Hartford and Baltimore County delegation, or at least the ones that border Hartford and Baltimore County. And it’s just interesting, you know, and maybe I’m naive, because, I mean, I got into this position on council to serve my community, you know, I’m a service-oriented guy. And maybe I’m jaded by the fact that I don’t have to worry about party politics, I don’t have to worry about big donors, because I’m not running a $200,000 election or something. But, you know, it’s disheartening when you have community members telling you their feelings and their frustrations and their concerns, and you feel it, because I had a family member in Hartford Memorial for a month this year, all of January, you know, and I’ve had family members, several family members over the past four years in Hartford Memorial for inpatient services. And to know that, you know, you’re moving some beds, inpatient beds, to Bel Air eventually, that’s the overall goal, but still knowing that that’s not going to suffice for what the county actually needs is just infuriating. You know, outpatient services by far breed more dollars in return. You have more reimbursable dollars in outpatient services than you do in inpatient services. And that’s for a number of reasons that we can get into, you know, some of it depends on where your politics lies as to how you view things. Some of it depends on whether or not you work in any capacity financially in the healthcare industry. But this business plan from Upper Chesapeake makes plenty of sense. If I were on their board, I would probably be for it. If I weren’t from this community, but being from this community, I understand, and being in this county, I understand that the delivery of the healthcare is not going to be adequate for what our current needs are. And certainly 10 years from now, if we continue to develop at the rate that we are, we’re going to be severely under serviced, especially as a lot of our population continues to age. And, you know, to be in the position we’re in, where we’re just honest to God, working to the best of our knowledge and ability with the people who can make decisions, and to have that circumvented by folks who don’t necessarily directly represent us is frustrating. Mary Ann and Steve Johnson represent Havertagh Grace, they represent Aberdeen. So, the two municipalities and the sector, the Route 40, 95 corridor that is impacted the most by this, and they are both in agreement that this is not the best way to deliver healthcare. So, why the hell are folks from other districts saying anything about this? Why is the county executive not giving more weight to what our delegation and our municipality has to say? You know, I guess, I mean, my blood was boiling last week when I read some of the letters, and again, maybe, maybe I’m just naive, maybe, you know, I don’t understand what a large campaign takes in terms of donations or support or whatever the hell you want to call it. But I do know that, you know, we’ve all fought for it, our delegations fought for it, you know, some of the folks who are out there saying that it’s the city council’s fault, there are specific names that I could name, but that’s for another time. If you would put one fucking ounce of the energy that you put into defacing any of us into fighting this cause, or putting that frustration where it belongs, you know, we would probably be talking about a different situation right now. So, to get beat up by some of the citizens that we’ve been representing, and then to get let down by our elected leadership, many of whom I voted for, is probably, probably the hardest lesson I’ve had to learn in the political game. But with that said, Mr. Mayor, I think I’ve said enough.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Robertson. Well said. I’d like to go to, who’s next? Councilmember Zinner, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, councilmembers. I’m not sure where to begin after all this. However, I do want to say a couple of things. I want to apologize that I was, I had missed some meetings, it was due to some personal family issues. And I would have preferred being here than having to deal with some of those issues that I had to deal with personally, but we’re on the right track again, we think. And I do want to make just a couple of comments, but they’ll be much more brief, I hope, regarding the hospital situation. I got into politics, if you want to call it that, but wanting to be on city council because I started speaking out in 2016 when I heard Lyle’s first presentation regarding the freestanding medical facility. And the immediate thing I saw was just really a money grab in terms of changing the whole structure. And of course, Maryland is the only state with a global revenue budget, which allows them to really find all sorts of loopholes to create profit for themselves. University of Maryland, I think, posted $1.2 billion in profits last year, and for some reason, nothing for Upper Chesapeake. If you’re going to merge and buy up a hospital, you don’t treat them like a franchise and make them go on their own. But I do firmly believe that the paradigm shift is coming. When you look at the news, news on television and you see the sacrifices that our healthcare workers are making for their communities, and they’re dying, or they get the disease and they can’t go right back, once they’re no longer contagious, there is going to be a shift. I think this pandemic is going to burn this system down that we have today. It is, it’s failing, it’s failing the American people in every context, in every state. When I started in healthcare, I worked at a hospital that was run by nuns, and they were pretty good at it. Things were a lot different then, you stayed in as an inpatient much longer, and you, it wasn’t as contentious, insurance companies didn’t have as much power as they do today. And then eventually, I went to work for a hospital system that was run by a very high-paid executive. He took that health system that spanned the state of Pennsylvania, in Pittsburgh and in Pennsylvania, and included two medical schools, world famous pediatric hospital, and ran it to the ground. He had a very high salary, it was nothing for him to fly on a private jet from Pittsburgh to Philadelphia to visit his hospitals, and it is a bankrupt system. And then there was my favorite of all, Christiana, and that is run by physicians. And there is a world of difference when a physician is at the head. And when Union Hospital turned its back on the University of Maryland, and make no mistake, they turned their back on the University of Maryland, Upper Chesapeake, because they didn’t want to be part of that hospital system, because they, they had the fear that they were going to end up being closed. They are now aligned with Christiana. And I say, congratulations and God bless you, because they will get the healthcare in that part of Cecil County that everyone deserves, while we will not. So, there may be other opportunities to lobby for a, an acute care facility. There may be enough of a, I hate the word revolt, but a shift in terms of the way physicians and other healthcare providers have been treated. When you complain about not having supplies that you need, administrators decide to fire you. There is probably one executive to every 27 providers. Why do 27 providers need an executive? And the salaries are really significant. When I was fighting for an acute care facility to remain at the time in Havertagh Grace, because we thought there were two properties downtown and Bully Rock, I had gotten a copy from one of my friends, we had a little organization called Neighbors for Healthy Havertagh Grace that we tried to put for, excuse me, put forward ideas in terms of uses or better services that we could have with the hospital, with acute care. And we found that, she had found for me, I believe it was a 2014 tax return, it was public record, that’s how she found it, but there were 10 executives, and their salary combined was about a little over $5 million, when the hospital itself, they were saying, was losing a million dollars. So, figure it out, do you really need all those executives? Do they really need that to make that kind of money? When you’re saying that your hospital is losing a million dollars, and yet the mothership is making hundreds of millions, if not a billion. So, I really feel a lot of it has to do with the finances, the profit margins, the way the healthcare system is structured, and I’ve been saying for a long time, it’s really broken in this country. And I do believe that this pandemic is going to, has really exposed the underbelly of some of the greed and mismanagement, and that we are going to see huge changes, and I really hope that they’re going to be for the better, and I hope it’s more physician-run facilities where everyone can work at the top of their license and not be rated for speaking up and speaking out. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Zinner. Councilmember Ringsacker.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, there’s not much I can say that hadn’t already been said. I’m going to say a couple of quick things about the hospital, I’m going to say some nice things about the rest of the town, because this is still a great place to live. So, speaking of a great place to live, I do remember at the groundbreaking of the high school, our county executive showed up in his Havertagh Grace High School jacket, you know, claiming he was a Havertagh Grace boy. I think he’s proved that he’s not. He doesn’t support us, he has no desire to support us. He’s not a Havertagh Grace boy, he can stay up in Bel Air for all I care. Nothing wrong with Bel Air, I like them, but he can stay away from us. As for the freestanding medical facility, there’s something you need to understand. What they do is if you go to a hospital and you get admitted to a regular hospital bed, and then, let’s say if you go up there for cardiac issues, and you’re there for a couple of days, they send you home, and then you have to get readmitted within that 30-day time period, I think it’s 30 days?
30.
Medicare will fine the hospital for that. They actually can withhold the money and fine them and give them all kinds of issues. So, what these hospital systems are going towards, which I think is borderline, if not overt fraud, you know, fraud, I personally think, it’s a personal thought, they create these freestanding medical facilities, so instead of having an admission, you have an observation bed. So, they take you out of the ER, whatever they’re going to call it today, and they put you in this observation bed. You go to the observation bed, and then you go home, and you have to be readmitted for this cardiac issue because it wasn’t treated properly, or you have other issues, or who knows whatever else. Well, guess what? That’s a new bill. They don’t get billed by, get charged by Medicare, they get money from Medicare if you have the proper Medicare plan. So, for those of you going to the freestanding medical facility in Aberdeen when it opens up, better hope you have your Medicare taken care of. Because Plan A, Part, Plan A, Plan B, all that stuff, it’s going to be interesting. So, good luck. For good news, I want to thank White Tiger Distillery and Mount Felix Winery for the amazing work they’re doing in our community. They recently donated a bunch of hand sanitizer to our police department, and today I met with, it’s our owner Ruth from White Tiger, and went up to Lorian Nursing Home, because I found out that they were in dire need of hand sanitizer, and he brought a couple gallons. And later this week, I’m meeting with Pete and Mary Ionella from Mount Felix, and they’re also going to do some donations, we’re working on some other stuff, and, you know, everybody’s giving back. They’re doing what they can for our community, and they’re working hard, because some people care about the community. One of my favorite people to talk about all the time is Ms. Deana Cardwell. Talk about how awesome she is. She has been working crazy tirelessly making these masks. She made me one with little American flags on it, I’m not wearing it so I can talk. I’ll put it on later, don’t worry. But she told my wife tonight that she hadn’t slept in almost three days, because she’s so worked up, and she’s got so many masks she wants to make for people in the community, and she’s working her fingers to the bone. She ran out of the elastic for the straps around the ears, so they’re taking old t-shirts, cutting them in straps and making them, so you tie it off and you can make it to fit. But she’s making these from hand, by hand, at home. And I just really commend her for her community spirit and her love of, you know, Havertagh Grace and the people in it. So, Ms. Deana Cardwell is just one of the most wonderful people I’ve ever met in my life. So, I want to thank Reverend Van Dyke for allowing me to say the prayer. I’d like to move on now to Student of the Month, Mr. Mayor. And tonight for homeschool student of the month, because I have been stuck at home with my two children who my two children who have been awful tough, I'm giving my son, Matthew, Ringsocker, homeschool Student of the Month because my daughter Sydney has been less than cooperative. So in here, I don't have anything from downtown, but I do have an old notepad and some pencils. But, and you can keep the bag and when you go clean up the doggy poop in the backyard, feel free to use it. So thank you, Matthew, for your hard work and Sydney maybe next month. Mr. Mayor, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Ringsocker. Councilmember Boyer, good evening.
This is certainly a council meeting to remember. I don't think I've ever experienced anything like this before. First, thank you all very much for your commitment and dedication and tireless advocacy. It was felt on the commission going in. I was told that letters were six to one in favor of the hospital, which was unbelievable to me. I was able to get a message to Bill to let him know that we really needed to make sure that the commission, because the problem is that the information wasn't getting to the commission members. As many of you know, and I've said here before, I chose my city when it came time for deciding what side of, of the issue I was going to be on. I made the decision that I was going to sign the letter and in doing so, I was approached by the Attorney General's Office and told that from this point forward, I have to recuse myself from the discussion. I, so I recused myself from the discussion. In doing so, I worked with the city as much as possible, making sure everybody was more aware of what the process was with the commission. It was very disturbing to me, the way, the, the way the meeting went and how there was no discussion on it. I know that there was the acting chair because just like myself, the chair who works for University of Maryland had to recuse himself as well. Then nobody brought it up as a, as a discussion point. And that is a red flag. My concern is that there is going to be, well, there is. Once we have the consolidation, there will be at least one less ICU bed in Hartford County. We already have a lack of, of care within the county. I brought it up earlier in the year about how many reds and yellows that were identified by, by the hospitals all around us. And that then, you know, hearing again from Lyle that there was no need for additional beds, it just, none of it makes any sense. But in the end, I'm very proud of our city. I know for a fact that each of the commissioners received all of the letters that you wrote. It's disturbing to me that nobody commented on that. They read all of the letters from each of the elected officials. I was told that each of those letters would be made public record and hearing that it's not on the public record, I'm going to find out about why that's no longer up on the public record, because I was told that they would all be put out there. It's a sad day for Havertagh Grace. So what's our next step? There is, there's no do-overs. We can't go back. There is no basis for us to go and have them reconsider the motion that was made. They have authority to close the hospital. They have authority to establish a freestanding medical facility. They have authority to establish a behavioral health unit. We can continue to express our concerns and our, and the need for an acute care facility. There is rumors that it could convert into an acute care facility sometime in the near, in the distant future. I think that is just rumors. I don't think there's anything factual to be put to that in any way, shape, or form. Even if you look at the layout of the facility, there's a lot of question marks that would come to say you couldn't even convert some of the rooms into permanent facilities. It's just very disturbing, the whole process. But in the end, I'm glad that I was able to make the choice and sign that letter and be standing with my city the whole way forward. I'm also very proud of the way that our, the people who work for this city have supported and taken care of the community during this state of emergency. I, I said before to Patrick, the ingenuity, the creativity, the willingness to step forward and not stand back and say, well, there's nothing I can do. Every step of the way, the people who work for this city care very much about each and every one of us. They want to make sure that we have clean drinking water, that the waste disposal systems work properly, that the trash is picked up, that, that they can not just take the money from their salaries, but make it of value by painting and taking care of everything around this community. So if possible, if you see them out on the street from a safe distance, please make sure you said thank you to them, email them, they're all our family, because they pretty much all live here. And with that, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Boyer. We're going to move to comments and business from the council president. Council President Glenn, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to give a shout out to our seniors. Given the press conference last week, school closures in Maryland have been extended, which almost, pretty much ends the school year for our senior class. And while many seniors are maybe grieving the profound loss of their senior year, the one thing the virus can't take away from them is the countless friendships, the bonds with classmates, teachers, administrators, that these seniors have experienced along their educational journey. They can take comfort in knowing they always have that treasure chest filled to the top with memories that they can cherish forever. They will graduate and be receiving their diplomas in the not-too-distant future. Some will further their education by attending colleges and universities. Some will go to the trades and crafts and some will go into the military services and the list goes on and on. I challenge each senior to strive to be your very best in whatever path you choose to follow. And I'm confident these seniors are going to be successful and our future is in great hands. I say that because keep in mind, this fine group of men and women are battle-tested. They were all born around 9/11, an historic event. And as they approached the tail end of their senior year, they've had to address the challenges of another historic event, COVID-19. And I got to tell you, if it's any group that can prevail, it's this senior class. I wish all our seniors nothing but the best in all future endeavors and never forget your roots in Havertagh Grace. We are all proud of you. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to use our light poles and any required hardware throughout the city to pay tribute to our senior class by hanging their banners to be displayed for a period of approximately two months.
I second that.
Council, I have a motion by the council president, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Can you read your motion one more time? I know it was, just want to read it one more time to the record.
Basically, that we use our light poles and any required hardware throughout the city to pay tribute to this senior class by hanging their banners to be displayed for a period of approximately two months.
Got it. I have a motion by the council president, seconded by Councilmember Robertson. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Council president's motion to display senior banners of Havertagh Grace High School graduates and all hardware necessary for a period of approximately two months passes 6-0 in the affirmative. Thank you very much, council president.
Okay, to continue, it's been a tough, been a tough couple of weeks for me because I found out a friend of mine, Johnny Dry, his wife passed away not long after that. Invaluable volunteer to the city of Havertagh Grace, Dennis Bowlin, lost his life, lost his battle. And then they always say it comes in threes. Today I learned that one of my former employees that I worked with, he was the one in that unfortunate bike accident up at Bully Rock, he passed away yesterday. And so my thoughts and prayers go out to the Dry family, the Bowlin family, and the Democra family. My thoughts and prayers are with you. Jimmy, I agree with you about Ms. Dina. Just to caveat what you said, as of yesterday, she said she had made 370 of these. I mean, so no wonder she's working around the clock. I mean, so, and again, I guess I too will touch base on the hot topic of the day, the hospital. If anybody at all questions the passion that this group has, sitting on this dais for a full-service hospital, you weren't listening. We have been fighting from day one, tooth and nail. And Casey, I got to say kudos to you. You kept us informed, you kept us in the loop. You allowed us to make that last plea. Unfortunately, it fell on deaf ears and given the, the fact that we're in the midst of a global pandemic, I still question, like you said, Dave, why now? I want to thank my counterparts for, for stepping up and having their voices heard. And Mr. Mayor, I got to tell you that your correspondence to the governor and to the Maryland Healthcare Commission was unparalleled. Unquestionable. And, you know, I, I see the passion that Governor Hogan shows at all the press conferences regarding the pandemic. And you have a mayor that reaches out on more than one occasion saying, I just need five minutes of your time, and you can't get him on the calendar. I'm blown away. I'm blown away that America reached out to the governor on such a, what I consider a very critical issue, and you can't get to the table. And I got to tell you, again, what we asked for this past week was a reasonable request. We just said, let us get through the crisis, then when it's all said and done, let's do a comprehensive review with what I wanted was some of the best doctors and professionals that money can buy to take a look at where the gaps were, where the shortfalls was, and then take that information and move forward to finding out what the best path forward is for healthcare for not only Hartford County, but the state of Maryland. And the fact that, you know, you know, the vote went the way it did, it blows me away. It truly does. I want everybody to keep in mind one thing. Our goal for today was, was to ensure the best healthcare possible for the people that we represent. And I think you heard that here tonight. It was incumbent upon us to look out for your best interest. We tried, we gave it our best shot. I'm still disappointed that we, we came up short. We've talked to other healthcare professionals. I mean, I asked the question, I says, what do you think about a freestanding medical facility? And the answer I was given was, it can work. It works in Middletown, but Middletown has a young population. You know, you can have an emergency room that, that'll address kids falling off a swing set, where kids get hurt from sports injuries. But you have to ask yourself the question, given the demographics of what we have here in Hartford County and specifically Havertagh Grace, with the countless, you know, nursing homes and assisted livings, will a freestanding medical facility work in our area? And I guess time will tell. Casey may have mentioned that it's going to reduce one ICU bed. What we found out in our review during this pandemic was the state of Maryland has some of the lowest numbers of ICU beds in the country. You ask yourself the question, why does it make sense to reduce another hospital if that's the case? What troubles me probably the most was we were accused of political rhetoric. To those individuals, to make such a statement, I offer this. As a federal civil servant for 38 years, I worked with some of the best and brightest. I was always told to do my homework and to assure you have all the necessary supporting documentation in which to make an informed decision. This is all we were asking for and based upon my 38 years with the federal government was without a doubt the right thing to do. To those so-called leaders who call themselves professionals and think it was dramatization and political rhetoric on our part, you were wrong. You missed the boat. I don't know if anybody watched One World Together last night, but Paul McCartney, Paul McCartney made a statement and I said, wow. Kind of what we were saying all along. His statement was this, tell our leaders to strengthen our healthcare systems. That's what he said. And again, while I'm not a subject matter expert when it comes to healthcare, I find it hard to believe that as our region continues to grow, only one full-service hospital can serve the needs of Hartford and Western Cecil County. In closing, I'm not convinced that all the pros and cons associated with Upper Chesapeake's applications were adequately addressed and quantified. With that being said, I think they put the cart before the horse. I truly hope that in the end, they got it right, because I get no satisfaction out of saying, I told you so. Because if it ever gets to that point, someone was adversely affected by this decision to move forward, and nobody, but nobody would want that to happen. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments, council president. We're going to go to item number 14 on this evening's agenda, which is adjournment. With that said, do I have a motion, council, to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
First by the council president, seconded by Councilmember Martin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to adjourn the April 20th council meeting carries 6-0 in the affirmative. The time is now 9:13. I call this meeting to an end. Thank you very much, council. Everybody, please be safe. There's going to be light at the end of the tunnel. See you soon.